Thank you. Please can I welcome everyone to the council meeting this evening, especially to the family of our dear friend and colleague Linda Murphy. Welcome Richard and Jessica, it's lovely to have you here tonight. Members, we're opening the meeting this evening with a special tribute to Linda. I know that colleagues who also wish to pay tribute with their own personal reflections, I'd like to say a few words. I first met Linda about six years ago via our local political party. It wasn't long before we became very close friends. They had such a bubbly personality, positive towards life and always had a cheeky smile and would be up for doing anything. As you know, Linda's passion was the climate change. Now remember her first Lib Dem conference she attended a few years ago? Nothing would hold her back and she was up on the stage giving a speech to about 1000 people. I just remember how inspirational she was and how amazing she was to do that. As friends, Linda and I often enjoyed going for coffee and cake and sometimes had a meal before or after meetings. I recall after one meal, we ended up at Winchester Accident and Emergency. Somehow Linda was getting in my car and managed to slip. Her legs were in the car but her body was out and somehow twisted her legs. So I ended up taking up to a Inianta, yeah, that's quite an interesting event. She ended up being on crutches, I think it was about six weeks, wasn't it Richard? Sometimes after council meetings, as you know, I live quite far from Winchester and I'd go and stay at Richard and Linda's house. Little did I know that I'd be sharing the room with David Tennant. They had a big life-size picture of David Tennant in the room, so that was quite interesting. When I became the mayor, I asked Linda if she would chair my charity events team and typical of Linda, she didn't hesitate and she said yes. We'd have long chats about how we'd raise funds for our many charities. We talked about maybe producing a calendar. But Linda said, oh, maybe not an ordinary calendar. How about we go about doing a Calendar Girl-style calendar? I put that to my team of colleagues that helped me, but unfortunately there wasn't a lot of support for that, so we put that one on the back burner. As I've always already mentioned, Linda was one of the most positive people I've ever known and when she became ill, she still stayed very positive. I was very fortunate and lucky to class Linda as a dear friend. Now, Mrs Chaplin, last we had together, thank you. Laura, would you like to speak now?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it will be an honour. Richard, Jessica, I'm just going to say a few words on behalf of our staff team and as our cabinet member leading on the internationally significant area of climate change, Linda worked with staff teams across the council and many colleagues have asked me to pass on their deepest wishes of condolence at her sudden passing. And I and the director team here tonight know that Linda was hugely supportive of our team and our work. She always had a smile for everyone and her infectious enthusiasm and dedication towards tackling the climate emergency really shone through in everything she did. In championing the climate emergency, she challenged us all to push boundaries and do more with her quiet, steely determination whilst at the same time always supporting our efforts, challenging us to see the big picture but never over-asking, never asking the impossible of the staff team and for that, that we were grateful that we could work with her to achieve aims for this council. Colleagues who worked closely with her shared some words that I wanted to share with you this evening and they described her as a shining light and full of passion and always putting others before herself and truly one of life's good people. Linda's clear, supportive collaborative leadership with the officer team will be sorely missed, but her memory will live on in our work to tackle the climate emergency. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Laura. Please can I now pass to the leader of the council, councillor Lucille Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it is astonishing that it was just over a month ago that I had to make the sad announcement that my friend and colleague Linda was no longer with us and it still feels very raw and frankly unbelievable. So it felt only right that we took time tonight before our main business that we pay tribute to such a worthy member of this council and a lovely person to many of us and I'm very glad that Richard and Jessica are here with us tonight to hear our reflections. At Cabinet, I spoke about Linda's character, her calm and unflappable exterior, all amazing and great qualities for being a member of Cabinet and a councillor and that underneath, underneath that unflappable exterior, there was a steely determination to just get things done. Linda absolutely loved her role as a councillor and took great pride in looking after the residents of St Michael. She was also very, very proud to be a member of Cabinet. She was a great team player and didn't shy away from taking tough decisions. But most of all, she was delighted to be responsible for delivering environmental policies that would improve the lives of local people. Linda was always good fun to be with, you've heard about her infectious smile and giggle and I will miss her friendship enormously. Laura has just spoken about how much she was respected and liked by all who worked with her and to endorse this, I'm delighted to share with you today a short video that our comms team have put together, picking out the highlights of Linda's career on the council.
Together, we can think about and plan what actions we need to take in our communities so that we are playing a critical role in the global climate challenge. Climate change is a huge challenge, but we have seen that we can achieve extraordinary things if we all work together for a better future. Let's rise to this challenge.
Thank you Lucille for that contribution. What a wonderful video. Thank you to the staff who pulled this together, thank you. Please can I now pass to the leader of the opposition, councillor Caroline Hall.
Madam Mayor, thank you for asking me to speak this evening. Richard, on behalf of the Conservative councillors, may I offer you and your family our deepest sympathies following the passing of Linda. I recall Linda coming into this chamber to present her petition many years ago and hearing her speak with enthusiasm and passion and I remember thinking then, I expect Linda will be standing for election in May and of course she did and was duly elected. We knew Linda as an excellent councillor, very committed to her portfolio and her ward and importantly, fun to be with, always smiling and pleasant to work with. Today, we stand alongside you, your family and all councillors in this chamber to celebrate her contribution to Winchester City Council. The council is about our collective might and Linda typified that effort. All over too soon, but nonetheless recognised and appreciated by us all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hall. Members, I've been approached by several members who'd also like to say a few words and then I will invite other members who are here present to give their own reflections should they wish to. So councillor Angela Clea.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Richard, Jessica. I will always remember Linda for her strength, her passion and belief in all that she achieved, especially on her as cabinet member for climate change. Linda was full of light and comradeship, a little shy and quiet at times, but I can assure you, when she was needed to be strong, she was strong. We used to have a chat and a giggle over many things. We both love the Isle of Wight, me because my family is there and Linda because it was a place to relax with Richard. She was a dear friend and colleague who touched so many lives and hearts and Richard, for you and your family, I would just like to say this. Linda was very well-liked and for that, she would thank us all. And those of you who loved her so very, very much, she would thank you most of all. So God bless you and your family, thank you.
Thank you councillor Clea. Can I now ask councillor Pierson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Richard and Jessica. By the very scheme of things, I did not know Linda socially. Most of my face-to-face contact with her were in various committees, but it was very obvious when Linda joined the city council in 2018 that her passion lay in projecting and enhancing the environment, the climate emergency and all things green. She wanted cleaner air, cleaner transport and a healthier, more sustainable future for everyone. Within a short period of time, she was given the cabinet portfolio for the environment, a role she took with determination despite being far from well. Linda was admired by us all from both sides of the council for the way she dealt with her illness and projected her ideas and beliefs. She even added to a constitution to public life by allowing her name to go forward for a nearby parliamentary seat. It is great sadness that due to her illness and subsequent death, she was not able to see some of her work coming to fruition, although she has a lot of plus points as we've just seen on the screen. To Richard and her family, we send our heartfelt condolences at the loss of a much admired lady. Winchester City Council is a poorer place without her. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Pierson. Now can I ask councillor Ferguson, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and lovely to see you, Richard and Jessica. It's really hard to sum up in a few words what Linda meant to me. She was a friend and she was also a colleague. I remember meeting Linda for the first time actually in a local election. It was up at King's School, it was pouring rain, in the rain and she was telling for us that prize job outside in the cold and in the rain. And I remember talking to her and immediately liked her and immediately thought she had so much more to give. So I suggested she might come and talk to the Liberal Democrats. She was actually telling for us, the Liberal Democrats, so that was a good sign. And then the rest, other people have spoken about. People have talked about how kind, how funny she was, so many people have talked about how dedicated she was, how determined and I have to echo that. You know, even when she was so ill, she was so determined not to give up. I worried about her, I asked her to step back, but no, she had things she needed to do. She was always determined to speak out, she did at the conference, even though I know she hated public speaking. She was determined to tackle one of the biggest issues we all face, the climate emergency. It's still out there, despite all the noise that's going on in government, it's still the biggest issue. She was determined to make sure the residents of her wards, particularly those who felt unheard or didn't feel they had a voice, those people without the sharp elbows, she was determined to speak up for them and she did again and again. In the public arena, in meetings, she was often quiet. Some people took that as weakness, that was a mistake, no one should be fooled by that. If she'd set her sights on something, Linda would make it happen. Her tenacity, determination always coming through, I really admired that in her, it's something I want to emulate. Linda was so much more than a colleague to me, a colleague to all of us. She was a friend, she was an inspiration, she was a model for women entering local politics. She was always able also to recommend a good sci-fi book, which is something people may not know about her. I'm hoping Richard can carry that on for me. She could always make me smile and I often didn't have to ask what she was thinking. I could look and I could see from the look in her eyes. We are poorer without her, I miss her like nothing else, I think about her every day. But the work she started goes on as councillor Pierson says, including, I have to say, the search for a local renewable energy generation opportunity. This is something she was really passionate about and Richard said to me that one of the things he thought might be a fitting tribute was if one day we could name a wind turbine after her. So I challenged this council, can we find a site? Can we put up a wind turbine? And can we please call it the Linda Murphy Turbine for all time? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Can I now ask councillor Warwick? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Richard and Jessica. I first met Linda when she was a new candidate for the local elections and was campaigning for a doorstep glass collection service. This positive recycling initiative that would benefit more than 50,000 households in the Winchester district had cross-party support and it was a pleasure to include this in the new collection service, in the new refuse contract that she signed. As a fellow portfolio holder for climate change, whatever our political party that we represent, I have a massive respect for the work that Linda achieved and the policies that she laid out to bring about a reduction in our carbon footprint. It was only a few months ago that Linda and Caroline and I met over a very amicable hot chocolate to discuss how best to engage a wide range of young people in the recent Youth Climate Change Conference Assembly hosted by the University of Winchester and supported by Madam Mayor. Linda's passion for young people and the environment was evident. I'm sorry she will not see the full outcome of all her work, her policies and plans, but I would like to reassure you both that she knew her work would be a catalyst and will have a lasting effect on Winchester. And every time each one of us recycles that glass bottle or jar, spare a kind thought for Linda who will be smiling down on each one of us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Warwick. Can I now ask councillor Radcliffe?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and lovely to see you, Richard and Jessica. Linda was of course a celebrated campaigner and councillor. She was entirely responsible for getting me elected, just. And she put up with many of my outbursts of frustration in the process. She taught Chris Edwards and I how to campaign and since last May, she mentored us as new councillors and we really couldn't have had a better mentor. In her quiet, courteous, determined, humorous way, Linda was a force for good in local politics and in her community. She had the most impact on green issues, but her activism didn't end there. In fact, I think reflecting on her, I thought perhaps more than anyone else I've met in local politics, Linda embodied that old Wesleyan credo, do all the good you can, in all the ways you can, for all the people you can, for as long as you can. That was Linda, she was in fact, in the best possible way, the consumer Lib Dem do-gooder. But crucially, she was never self-righteous about it. Her legacy lives on in a hundred ways, so like councillor Warwick, when I hear the tinkle of glass as Biffa pick up your bottles for recycling, I'll hear Linda. When you see a row of shiny new electric vehicle charging points, that's Linda. When you pass a new wildflower meadow or a grass verge ablaze with local grasses and flowers, that's Linda too. I join others speaking here tonight to express really my gratitude for the contribution that Linda made in her far-too-short time with us and to her family, to Richard, for sharing her with us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Radcliffe. Can I now ask councillor Gemmell to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And can I say as group manager for the Conservative group of this council, offer you our sincerest condolences. It is a grief that few know to lose a partner early in life and it leaves a hole that is unfulfilling. But she shone as a star and please take that away from here, as few do in the short time that she was with us. You've heard from both sides here how much she's touched people and how much her actual campaigning has had an effort and had a result. There are few of us here who can say that we've stood here for the amount of time we've stood here and made that sort of dent upon other people's influences within this council as Linda did. Please take from here the amount of cheerfulness she brought to us, the amount of steel that she had in her backbone when she was trying to persuade us of something that we were not quite sure about, but by the end of the evening were absolutely positive that we were following, whether it was our party's policy or not, there was something in there that we were going to take away, go and have a look at and go, hmm, maybe there's an idea here. I would like just to finish by saying, she went too soon, we all know she went too soon. It was with absolute disbelief that we heard how soon it was. And we hope that the rest of us can go forward and still hear that voice and I think you can hear it absolutely echoed tonight that we do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gemmell. Can I now ask councillor Todd to say a few words? Thank you. Mr Sargent, put your mic on, thanks.
That's working, sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's also good to see that Richard and Jessica are here this evening. The mayor's chaplain asked us to remember and councillor Horrell rightly remembered the moment when Linda burst onto the Winchester City Council scene and she said it was many years ago. Incredibly, it was the 22nd of February 2018, it was less than four years ago when Linda stood up, made the first speech at the city council and I think Richard has told me it was her first public speech ever as a member of the public, introducing her curbside glass recycling petition, already talking about climate change and her love for the environment, already demonstrating her humour, her passion, her determination. I'd like to just touch on the Linda that you might not have seen because certainly in public, as others have mentioned, she was unambiguous in her commitment to climate change and action on climate change and biodiversity as well. You might have seen it in public, boy, you should have seen it in private. Because there can be moments in Cabinet or private party meetings where people slightly lose their way, chase after particular ideas and Linda would be there and she would remind us of the centrality of our commitment to tackling climate change and to improving the environment and she'd do it kindly, gently and unambiguously. So help us back on track and bring the values that we do all profess but sometimes need to be reminded of, always with such kindness, always with humour and as others have said, with steely resolve, always a smile. And that's how I was think of Linda and always thinking of others as well, even when her illness had come back. And we all feel a very real sense of loss, although of course, nothing comparable to what Richard, Jessica, Alex and Ewan are feeling. And a gap, a gap when we gather together because we know that when Linda was in the room, things would be different and things would be better. So certainly I will be trying to remember not just what she did achieve, but also what she still sought to achieve and equally importantly, the way that she sought to achieve those things and the way she dealt with people and the way she was able to make change in a way that was kind and gentle and respectful and effective and caring for those around her and seek to carry that forward because I think if we can do that, it will help us all individually and collectively achieve more than we would have done otherwise.
Thank you councillor Todd. I just wondered if there's any other members who might like to give a personal reflection of the time they had with Linda? Okay, thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone for sharing their personal tributes to our friend and colleague Linda. As Mayor of Winchester, once again, I'd like to offer condolences from the whole of the council and the officers at the city council to Richard, Jessica, Alex and Ewan. Members now, if you don't mind, I'd just like to spend some time with the family and we'll just take a five-minute break. Thank you.
It's now seven twenty eight. And please can I again welcome everyone to the meeting of the Winchester City Council? The time is now, yeah, sorry, seven twenty eight. And the meeting has been reconvened showing the full shot following a short adjournment following our tribute to our former councillor, Linda Murphy. Welcome especially to members of the public who have submitted questions to the council and also to those who are introducing petitions this evening. Please advise the meeting of a few housekeeping meeting matters this evening, including those to include those on Covid protocols. Should the fire alarm sound, officers will assist and direct us to the muster point, which is Abbey Gardens, which is behind me. Members will be familiar with the location of the toilet facilities in the Guildhall, which are both on the ground floor and the second floor, which can be reached through either the entrance door from the chamber. Regarding our meeting procedures this evening, members will have noted that there are push-to-talk microphones on the desk, and please, if you wish to speak, you press the right button. There is a technician in the room monitoring the audio output, and should there be any issues with your microphone, an officer will come and assist. Should for any reason you be required to use one of the push-to-talk microphones not allocated to you, please use the wipes to sanitise the mic before another member uses it. Please can remind everyone to indicate and use your way by standing when wanting to address the meeting, and I will call your name when it's your turn to speak. A reminder to everyone present this evening to please wear your face masks should you leave your seat at any time, unless of course you have medical reasons meaning you're unable to wear one. Members and guests, can everyone please ensure their mobile devices are switched to silent so that they do not disturb the meeting? And just again, reminder, should the phone go off, I have a charity box here which would welcome a donation. Members, we clearly have a large agenda this evening and an important agenda, and to insist me in maximising all opportunities for those members who wish to address the meeting, please can I ask that questions, matters raised in debate and any points of order are succinct and to the point as possible. Thank you. And finally, can I advise that the meeting's been audio recorded live and live streams from the website and can be found next to the meeting's details whether the recording will remain thereafter. A video of this meeting will also be recorded and can be uploaded uploaded to the council's YouTube channel later. So the first item of business this evening are the minutes of the previous meeting of the council. Members, the minutes of the council meeting held on the twenty second of September twenty twenty one, we shall set out on pages nine and thirteen of your agenda pack. Please can I sign these as a true record? Please. Thank you, members. The next item on the agenda is disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosure of interest to be made regarding the business before us tonight, members? Councillor Todd.
Yes, I would declare an interest as a member of Hampshire County Council, since some of the issues do relate to county matters. However, it's a personal and non prejudicial interest.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Lumby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I please make the same declaration as a Hampshire County councillor?
Thank you. Yes, Madam Mayor, and the same for me as executive member for climate change at Hampshire County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Thank you, members. The next agenda item are announcements. Firstly, it's a great pleasure that I formally launched the launched the annual Mayor of Winchester's Community Awards this evening. The Mayor of Winchester's Community Awards recognises and celebrates the organisations and individuals who have given outstanding service to the people of the Winchester district. And I now invite your nominations, and the closing date for their receipt is eighteenth of February twenty twenty two. Should you wish to discuss your nomination or any aspect of the awards, please contact the Mayor's secretary, Debbie. Over the next few weeks, plans for an awards ceremony event will then be decided. Next, can I please invite you all to some of my charity events? I have three upcoming events, the first one being on Saturday, twenty second of January. This is the Mayor's Burns Supper evening at Holiday Inn in Winchester. The tickets can be purchased via my website, and the price is thirty pounds each. Twenty sixth of February, we're going to have our annual quiz evening. We've now decided to do this online, and again, details will be found later on on my charity's website. And thirdly, for now, we have the sixth of March, which will be our annual pie and mash supper held in Abbey House, which councillor Mike Reed will be helping to organise. Thank you, members. So I have a few more announcements this evening. My next announcement is to report that we are working with the Deputy Carison Commander Worthy Down to produce an update and refresh the council's Armed Forces Community Covenant, which was originally signed in twenty thirteen. The commanding officer at Worthy Down would like to host an event to launch and celebrate the refreshed covenant and to be able to invite members and invited guests to the barracks and receive a tour and a briefing. The aim being to help everyone to gain greater understanding of the work that's been undertaken at Worthy Down over the past few years, and to into turning it into a tri-service training base, as well as home to several regimental headquarters. Details are still to be finalised, but if members can pencil in their diaries for March the second, and should they like to attend, further details will be sent via my secretary once all confirmed. And finally, this evening, I'm very pleased to announce that regarding the Queen's New Year honours list, I have written to the following recipients. Mr Robin Hudson, an MBE for Services to the Hospitality Industry and Philopathy, sorry, I said that wrong. Tim Jackson, lately of Sparschaw College, an OBE for his services to further education. And Sondre Huxham, Basic Schools Development Manager for the Army Training Regiment Winchester of Winchester, an MBE for Services to Military Education. Leader, do you have any announcements, please?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, none tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief Executive, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies this evening have been received from four councillors, councillor Clementson, councillor Evans, councillor Miller and councillor Maclean.
Yes, councillor Pearson.
So I'm not trying to upset the programme, but would the mayor consider appropriate to congratulate two past members of this council? That's George Honingbury, who is at the end of this month taking up his ambassadorship in Cuba, and Dame Caroline Dineage, who has just received her damehood. She's presently his MP for Gosport, but she also was on this council from nineteen ninety-eight to, I think it's two thousand and three. I think it would be very good grace if we could acknowledge that.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Yes, I'd be delighted to acknowledge that, and I shall ask the Secretary to write. Thank you. So next agenda item is item number five. We have questions from members of the public. Welcome once again to members of the public who are here this evening and who have submitted questions for the council to answer. I understand we have received five questions for this evening's meeting. All members have copies of the questions received, which have been circulated electronically. Printed copies are also available in the public seating area. Please now can I call upon Mr Andy Ley to ask his question? Please can I, can I ask, sorry, please, can you ask your question as it's written in the order paper, or if you prefer, simply refer members to this? You have two minutes to ask your question. A reminder that following the response given by the member, you may also ask a supplementary question, which may arise directly out of the original question on the reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to ask a question in this full council meeting. Local businesses are struggling to stay afloat as we all get used to the year living with Covid. Independents in particular depend on the support of their local councils to make sensible decisions to help keep them trading. Despite this, we are seeing two businesses being erected from King's Walk, and barely a week's go by, when we don't read off business, having to close their doors due to the council landlord not being prepared to come to sensible accommodations on rent and other charges. How will this administration commit to supporting the business community? Thank you, councillor Nanny.
Thank you, Mr Ley. Councillor Nanny, please can you respond?
Um, thank you, Mr Ley. Local business, the council is fully committed to supporting the local business community. Over five million of discretionary and forty five million pounds of mandatory grant funding to support businesses most affected by the Covid nineteen pandemic has been administered by the council since the beginning of the pandemic. This has provided a day-to-day lifeline for many businesses and has also helped businesses transform and adapt their business models to reflect the changes in the operating landscape and diversify their offer to create sustainable businesses for the longer term. Further funding is now being made available in the coming weeks for businesses in the rate system via the Omicron Hospitality and Leisure Grant and a discretionary grant payment via the Additional Restrictions Grant to hundreds of recipients across the district. As well as the grant programme, support for businesses is being offered through a number of channels, including Covid-specific business support and advice services, dedicated marketing campaigns to raise awareness and drive footfall, and the introduction of a fully funded for the first year district wider e-commerce platform. Coming up, independent businesses will benefit from further initiatives which will continue to raise consumer awareness and drive footfall, including a light-up Winchester event at the end of January, along with dedicated promotional materials for all the market towns and the city. In addition, the council considered requests for rent holidays from its own tenants as a result of the pandemic. In total, five hundred and seventy two thousand pounds of rent has been foregone from sixty tenants, with the intention to support tenants in genuine need and assist them navigate through the worst of the pandemic without irreparable harm to tenant businesses. The council is also committed to bringing forward the long-awaited Central Winchester Regeneration area to deliver the vision of the Central Winchester Regeneration Supplementary Planning Document and bring resilience to the local economy. To support our local independent creative businesses, a key priority is to breathe new life and activity to the area in and around King's Walk, which will be an important step towards the long-term transformation of the wider area.
Thank you, councillor Nanny. Mr Ley, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Madam Mayor, I do have a supplementary question. Thank you for your response, councillor Nanny. Will the Winchester City Council Cabinet also commit to the following steps to support our business community? First one, promise not to erect the tenants of King's Walk until suitable alternative premises have been found. Secondly, reduce all rent on council-owned commercial unit in the bid area by twenty percent. Number three, reverse the hugely damaging parking charge increases, which serve only to make it more difficult for local people to visit the city and hit the poorest people and single parents the hardest. If the administration...
Sorry, Mr Ley, you're meant to ask questions as per the original question, not ask new questions?
But that's why I'm asked a question whether the...
The supplementary question is a supplementary on your first question. You're actually asking new questions.
Trying to ask the administration whether they would do this to help the community of the business community. Madam Mayor, if you...
These are new questions you're asking? It's not the same as the original questions. I'm sorry, I can't accept it this evening. I'm sorry.
Understand, I accept your refusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I now ask Ms Biddour to ask her question? Just a reminder, if you do have a supplementary, it must be supplementary on the original question that you're asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council. I have a question. In the Winchester Movement Strategy Proposal, it is mentioned that bus access for the proposed new Northern Park and Ride on the Andover Road corridor could be maintained alongside the proposed walking and cycling corridor along the closed, the then now closed Andover Road North, once traffic is rerouted through the Kings Barton Estate via Winchester Avenue. It states that this would, in quotes, require a redesign of the agreed developer-proposed junction at Andover Road Hairstock Road junction, unquote. And indeed, I understand Carla Holmes would have to submit a variation to planning permission. What is the current status? Has the developer been asked to do this?
Thank you, Ms Biddour. Councillor Todd, do you have a response, please?
I do indeed. Thank you very much indeed for your question. First of all, in answering this, I need to declare a personal and non- First of all, in answering this, I need to declare a personal and non-prejudicial interest in that I am also a Hampshire County Council representative on the Kings Barton Forum. And also the opposition spokesman on environment, transport and economy issues, looking at transport issues across the entire county. A planning application to revise the design of the Northern Kings Barton Junction cannot practically happen until Hampshire County Council and Carla Holmes have agreed a new design for that junction. And that is not currently the case. A junction design that is opposed by Hampshire County Council will not be approved. A junction design that is not supported by Carla Holmes will not be built, since they have full and irrevocable permission granted by the Secretary of State to build the currently approved junction design, should they wish to do so. We continue to pressure both parties to come to an agreement on the earliest possible timing. In the unlikely event that neither party submits a planning application following an agreement to a new junction design, we will be more than happy to ask the parties involved to do so. It is important to note that fulfilment of the highways element of planning permission 09/02412/OUT, which is the outline planning permission for Kings Barton or Barton Farms it was at the time, given permission by the Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government on October 2, 2012, following agreement to the Andover Road diversion by Hampshire County Council in their Statement of Common Ground published in January 2011, as well as the Section 278 and highways Section 106 requirements for Kings Barton, agreed by Hampshire County Council on March 11, 2011, are a matter for Hampshire County Council. The city council has no power or authority on highways matters, and obviously neither Hampshire County Council nor Winchester City Council has the power to override a decision made by the Secretary of State for Local Government. The scheme could be changed if an amended planning application for the Northern Junction were submitted either by Carla or by Hampshire County Council as and when they reach agreement on a junction redesign. And then the application was subsequently approved by the City Council Planning Committee. The design of the Northern Andover Road Junction is a large scheme which may benefit from an urban design perspective from a redesign. For example, pedestrian and cycle provision within the currently agreed design is no longer consistent with modern standards. And consideration is also being given to including access for park and ride buses only along Andover Road through the Movement Strategy. As stated in the Movement Strategy engagement paper, when through traffic is rerouted via Kings Barton Development, bus access for park and ride services could potentially be retained on Andover Road alongside the walking, cycling and local access corridor, an option that was outlined in the Movement Strategy adopted by the previous administration in 2019. This would require a redesign of the agreed developer-proposed junction at Andover Road and Harestop Road. The Northern Park and Ride remains a critical priority to cut city centre traffic and pollution by encouraging people travelling to Winchester from the north to switch to park and ride buses to access the city centre. And, as stated above, given Carla's irrevocable right to build the current junction design, any change will need their consent. Through the city council's leadership of the Kings Barton Forum, we continue to encourage both parties involved in the highways design to come to an agreement on the fastest possible timing. We also continue working with Hampshire County Council via the City of Winchester Movement Strategy to ensure that the county council works on all the traffic issues in the northern part of the city and comes up with a comprehensive highways plan that addresses the traffic concerns of all residents in the area, including those living on Andover Road itself.
Thank you councillor Todd. If I may, oh, sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes, would you like a supplementary?
Yes, please, thank you, if I may. Yes, well, I suppose you've sort of answered it, but I'd like to ask it anyway, if I may. Will an application to vary the original Andover Road planning application allow Winchester residents to have their say on the future status of Andover Road? And could this in turn affect the highway status of Winchester Avenue? I suppose I'm asking, would it be considered possible to open the Andover Road North, keep the Andover Road North open to all traffic, not just to the buses, as well as Winchester Avenue?
Councillor Todd, can you respond, please?
Yes, and I, the design work is currently, any potential redesign is being renegotiated between Hampshire County Council and Carla Holmes. So if you wish a different design to go to the planning committee from either of those two bodies, because either body can make a submission, my suggestion is that you contact the county council, since they are leading on the design work and the negotiations with Carla Holmes. And so my suggestion would be that if you wish Hampshire to agree, put a plan into Winchester for approval, then your start point is to influence Hampshire County Council to put forward a design that is different to the one that is currently agreed. When that design comes to Winchester, it would obviously be, obviously the views of the highways authority on the plans for highways will carry a lot of weight, but it will be a normal planning application. And so you will, the members of the public at that point will have an opportunity to influence the planning committee on whether or not to accept the revised proposal, with the proviso that if the planning committee does not accept the revised proposal, the previous agreement is fully authorised and in place and Carla can build the current junction design. So my advice to you, based on similar situations in the past, is you will be best to achieve the outcome that you might wish by influencing Hampshire to submit an application that meets your desires. Because without that happening, it is not possible, since we are not the highways authority and not the developer of the design, for the city council to change that. We only have the ability to accept or reject what Hampshire come forward with.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Todd and Ms Biddell for your question. I should have said earlier, just remind you that all questions and answers will be published on the council's website, due course. Could I now ask Kim Gottlieb to ask his question? And just a reminder that you can only ask, if you'd like to ask a supplementary, only on the original question. Thank you councillor. Mr Gottlieb.
Oh, I wanted to say push. Madam Mayor, thank you very much indeed. Yeah, I'll just read out my main question, which I'm afraid you already have, but when I initiated the judicial review back in 2014 in respect of Silver Hill, it was after I'd spent three years trying to persuade the council that its strategy was flawed and that the scheme would harm the city. I had some pretty robust conversations with councillors Beckett, Woods and Humby, but under pressure from officers and advisers, it seemed that the train had left the station and no one was prepared to put the brakes on. The rest is history. The council was lambasted in the High Court for behaving unlawfully, and McClair-Lloyd-Jones' inquiry found that the chief cause for the council getting into the mess was the way in which the project was managed and the way in which councillors were advised. When at the beginning of 2016 councillor Godfrey realised that the project was going nowhere and pulled the plug, the present leader, councillor Thompson, was one of those who opposed the idea of terminating the contract with Henderson. To be fair, she wasn't alone, and at the time, the majority of councillors were pretty unhappy with the outcome of my actions. Since then, I'm told, most of the councillors have had a change of heart about the Henderson scheme, and that even some of my fiercest detractors acknowledged that what would have been a disaster for the city was averted. My question to the leader tonight is, with the benefit of hindsight, does she accept that the stopping of the Henderson scheme was a good thing, or would she still prefer that it had been built as originally planned?
Thank you, Mr Gottlieb. Leader, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, indeed I would. I'm sure Mr Gottlieb would agree that hindsight is the most wonderful thing. However, I think your memory has not served you well, because I was the councillor who proposed the motion to terminate the contract with Hendersons. It had widespread cross-party support and was carried. But more importantly now, our focus is on bringing forward a scheme that is right for the city and the district. Thank you.
I apologise, of course, sorry if I may ask a supplementary. Before that, I'd apologise if I've got that detail wrong, but I thought I'd saw a minute. Anyway, my supplementary is as such. I mention the events of 2014 because tonight reminds me of all the meetings we had back then. Many of us here tonight sat in this chamber and were told that the proposals for Silver Hill all made sense, that they had been fully considered and that everything about them was absolutely marvellous. There's no time to go into detail now, but I am as certain as I was back then that the current proposals put the project on an even worse trajectory than it was in 2014. The tragedy is that the last three and a half years since the SPD was adopted have been wasted, and the council has ended up with a different strategy that is fundamentally flawed. It won't lead to a successful outcome financially or in any other way. Crucially, it's also the case that there are far more effective ways available, and for example, the King's Walk block could be put on the market tomorrow morning. Unlike Rob Humby back in 2014, you do have the benefit of hindsight, and you know because the High Court and the McClair-Lloyd-Jones report said so, that the advice of officers and consultants and lawyers can be fallible, and that the outcome they recommended would have resulted in an ugly white elephant being built. I know that you're not going to delay anything tonight, but my supplementary question is, would you please agree to a meeting within the next few weeks with myself and a small number of other local property professionals so that we can explain and properly discuss with you why the current strategy won't work and why it will lead to more years of delay and further wasted expense which the city can afford?
Thank you, leader, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mr Gottlieb, for your supplementary. Of course, yes, the council will be taking a decision later tonight as to whether we move ahead or not with the project, and that decision is up to the whole council and not just down to me. I have to say, I hear what you say about coming in for another meeting, but I have to say there have been many opportunities for you as a landowner, as well as a member of the public, to come and speak to the team, and I know that you have taken that chance to do so when it has been offered. We have brought this decision before council because this is such a significant project for the city and the district as a whole, and we did not make the decision to bring it to council lightly. Also, I think it is fair to say that the clear public sentiment on this is to please get on with it. It has taken three years to get to this point, as you rightly pointed out, and it is right that this is the time to move ahead. Thank you.
I have to say, that's very disappointing, but not for the first time, thank you.
Thank you, leader, Mr Gottlieb, for your question. Can I just remind you, questions and answers will be published on the council's website, due course. Could I now call upon Mr Martin Wilson to ask his question? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councillors. Question to the leader. There have been four recent judicial review proceedings regarding decisions about land controlled by the council, and so far, all legal challenges to those decisions have been successful. The High Court decided the council acted unlawfully over Silver Hill in 2015, and this caused the resignation of the then leader and cabinet. The High Court again found against the council in 2019, and thereafter, the council has conceded that its decisions in respect of station approach and the Voltech site at Bar End were unlawful. The council has conceded in the fifth threatened judicial review in relation to River Park that it is again, once acted again unlawfully. This is unprecedented. These unlawful decisions have been taken while the chief exec, Laura Taylor, the leader, the deputy leader and the portfolio holder for housing and asset management have held their positions. Accordingly, how can the council justify these individuals remaining in post?
Thank you, Mr Wilson. Leader, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your question, Mr Wilson. But unfortunately, it contains factual inaccuracies and actually only one side of the story. The number of cases since 2018, which I consider to be a relevant recent period, shows that we have successfully defended more than double the cases we have conceded. Three of those cases that we successfully defended went all the way to the High Court. In two of the cases that went to the High Court and which the city council conceded, we did respond to the claims to confirm that if a timely pre-action letter had been issued by the claimant as required by civil procedure rules, court action may well have been avoided entirely. I, the deputy leader, the cabinet member for housing and asset management and the chief exec, have been in our roles when the council have continually responded to the higher demands of a global pandemic, the likes of which have not been seen in our lifetimes. We have balanced the most challenging of budgets in my memory. Staggeringly, despite this, we completed a record number of new council homes, opened one state-of-the-art leisure centre, refurbished another, rolled out millions of pounds in grant aid, developed an innovative new digital high street while working with Visit Britain to help our tourism businesses recover, and rolled out a new garden waste collection service. We've engaged with our residents continually, updating the council plan to improve life in the district, and we've published a biodiversity action plan, a green economic development strategy, the housing revenue account asset management strategy, the North Walls Park Plan, and both a procurement and contract management strategy and a customer charter. And it doesn't stop there. We're currently in the process of carrying out a new residents survey to see how our district's residents have fared during this difficult time. We've even netted awards left, right and centre. A double win at the RTPI Awards for our local plan work, a Bronze Carbon Literate Organisation Award, and another, in fact the 10th, RSPCA Gold Award for our animal welfare team. We've seen remarkable progress on regeneration. We have Central Winchester before us this evening, as well as St Morrisey's Covent, the Voltech's multi-storey car park, and Bishopsworth and Depot, all progressing despite the pandemic. We've kept our own premises ticking over, welcoming the return of visitors in the visitor information centre, and reopened our customer service reception whilst arranging for the Her Majesty's Court and Tribunal Service to operate from this Guildhall. As leader of the council, I would therefore take this opportunity again to thank all my cabinet colleagues, the chief exec and all officers for all their hard work and all they have achieved for the residents and businesses of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, leader. Mr Wilson, do you have a supplementary question?
I do indeed, a remarkable answer, I thank you for that. The initial legal challenge to the cabinet decision regarding the future of River Park rested on one ground. There are multiple grounds to challenge the proposal. The question is, is the council prepared to ignore the public interest and the lawfulness of its decision-making by pursuing the proposal, come what may?
Leader, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, thank you very much. Well, you are right, we have received a legal challenge over one issue, and it is over the lack of advertisement for a couple of areas within the site. We have now put an advertisement in the local paper and asked for comments on that particular point. I think, I hear what you say. I think we've had an extraordinary offer of partnership working with the Southampton University, and I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the city to allow them to- um, to allow them to um, lease uh, the site and and show, show, come back with a plan to us um, uh, for redevelopment there. And and I think working with, I I don't think any anybody, any sensible person would actually feel that um, working with such um, uh, um, a great university and a development that will bring um, hundreds of thousands in terms of jobs and creative activities to the city is is a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, leader, and thank you, Mrs Wilson, for your question. Can I again remind people, the question and answer will be published on the council's website in due course. Could I now call upon Mr Sam Felton to ask his question? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and uh, thank you to the council for allowing me this opportunity. Um, and uh, that said, despite many reasonable requests from local residents to follow a proper public consultation process for River Park, the council have charged ahead with the University of Southampton's proposal. Uh, with that in mind, will this administration and the university at least fully commit to an open and transparent public consultation for their proposal before the end of June two thousand and twenty-two? That should include publishing anonymised data collected during that process for public analysis.
Thank you very much, Mr Wilson. councillor Ernie, could you respond, please?
Well, thank you for your question, Mr Felton. Um, the university has made a public commitment to working collaboratively uh, with local residents while they develop their master plan for the River Park site. Um, these commitments were made at the public forum held on the first of November and when answering questions during the cabinet meeting of twenty-third of November, two thousand and twenty-one. The council cannot prescribe what the university will publish as part of their strategic consultations, nor their timings, as we have no remit to do so. However, the council does expect the university to provide opportunity for the public to engage with and comment on their emerging aspirations for developing the land as part and parcel of bringing forward a master plan for the site. Thank.
Thank you, councillor Ernie. Mr Felton, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, um, please. And thank you for your answer. Um, if the university do manage to come up with a plan in the next five years, uh, will the cabinet ensure that the plans will go to a full council vote before proceeding with those plans, please?
Councillor Ernie, can you respond, please?
Um, thank you. If the if the university come forward with a planning application, that would be dealt with um, in the usual way and it would be for council and the planning committee at that time to decide on those kind of issues. Um, I would like to say, though, that in recent conversations with officers, the university have reaffirmed their commitment to being a good partner to not only the city council but local residents. And they have indicated their intention to involve local people in moving their plans forward sooner rather than later. Um, I think Mr Felton may also be interested in the draft university strategy they've published, which is not only clear about their desire to co-design with local communities, authorities and partners to drive the social, environmental and economic benefits that are most vital to those local residents, but also reaffirms their net zero ambitions. Um, as the leader said earlier, um, I think we should be um, looking forward to a significant investment in our city rather than disparaging it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ernie. Thank you, councillor, Mr Felton, for your question. Just to remind again that all questions and answers will be published on the council's website in due course. Uh, thank you very much, members of the public for asking your questions. You're welcome to stay for remainder or part of the meeting or you're welcome to leave. It's entirely up to you. Thank you very much. Members, we're now going to item, agenda item number six, which is petitions. This evening we have two petitions which are set out in the council agenda. The first is to be presented by Miss Lucy Taylor regarding a Lido, Lido for Winchester. Thank you.
Lido, Lido. Um, in her introduction to-
So, sorry, can I just say you've got three minutes?
Stop.
Thank you.
In her introduction to liquid assets, Tracy Emin says, I think we have to remind everyone how important and wonderful Lidos are. In order to that we have, in order to do that, we need to build more of them. In fact, there ought to be one in every park, along rivers, in every part of the city. The thought of Lidos brings back childhood memories, being happy as a child. I think everyone should have this in their lives. We should not be closing Lidos, we should be saving them and building new ones. And never was this more relevant, as across the country there is a veritable Lido renaissance. Um, I'm here tonight to present the Lido for Winchester petition and bring a recommendation that to the full council that you support us in the creation of a Lido either as part of the North Walls Park Improvement Plan or as the redevelopment of River Park Leisure Centre. The petition has received a huge amount of support. From July to November, it was signed by three thousand and twenty-four people, two thousand seven hundred and sixteen online, as is in your paper, and additional three hundred and eight um, on paper petitions, plus a further, further one hundred and thirty-two from outside the district. People were kind of coming up to us wanting to sign this, even though they didn't live in Winchester. In addition, we've had six thousand unique hits to our website. We've had a number of letters to the Hampshire Chronicle in support and an outpouring of love for this idea on social media, particularly the Winchester Memories Group. People reminiscing about what joy and uh, great times they had at the Old Worthy Lane Lido. The response has been extraordinary. And the ideas really captured people's imaginations. As Deborah Idon of the People's Pool Campaign in Liverpool says, in terms of economic recovery and public health, Lidos feel like the perfect pandemic, post-pandemic project. They are community building hubs, they create cohesion, they build connection, they foster both physical and mental wellbeing and they create joy and fun, all things that we really need in this post-pandemic recovery. They're inclusive, it would be a place for young adults to be, for teenage girls to dwell, and a population who are drastically underserved in our community, and also a place for families to be together. Outdoor swimming is one of the few sports that attracts more women than men. So it would help in boosting female participation in sport, particularly older women. Um, and we believe that River Park is the best place for this because it's integrated with other leisure facilities. It's already a setting where people come to exercise. The land belongs to the citizens of Winchester and is for the purpose of public recreation. And it's a much-loved community resource. So we urge you as the full council and to give us a fair chance and hear our more detailed proposal and for creating a thriving community Lido that would provide immeasurable benefit to the people who live in Winchester and be a reason for people to come to our beautiful city. And ensuring that Winchester continues to be a destination for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, can I just invite the leader to respond, please?
Thank, apologies. Um, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and uh, um, thank you, Lucy, for presenting um, your petition today. Um, of course, I had the pleasure of meeting you and Jolien last year uh, when we initially talked through um, your ideas for a Lido in Winchester. As a swimmer myself, the idea of open water swimming uh, is very appealing, I have to admit. And aspiring to have a Lido once again somewhere in the district is an exciting, um, exciting idea. Um, I would certainly welcome the chance to explore how we could expand opportunities for open water swimming um, in and around the district. However, um, you seem to be very fixated on the former Leisure Centre site or North Walls Park and just seem to be unaware of the fact that this is in the flood plain. The very fact that the old swimming pool was built above ground seems to have been entirely ignored. Even as recently, and I believe as two thousand and fourteen, the area saw large-scale flooding. And indeed, this led to various flood prevention projects taking place to protect the area. The town forum has just agreed plans for improvements to the North Walls Park and outdoor swimming and paddling is included in those plans. We also have to recognise that not everyone is a fan of swimming. And as a council, it is our job to provide sporting facilities for all to enjoy, not only in Winchester, but on a district-wide basis. And having just invested of in a forty-two million pounds state-of-the-art leisure centre with excellent swimming facilities for the district, but based in Winchester. It is very unlikely that were the council to have money for extra investment, that Winchester would not be the place to do it. We would be looking further afield to other areas within our district to provide such a facility. All that said, of course, just because the council cannot cannot afford to invest in such facilities doesn't mean that you, the petitioners, cannot go ahead and raise funds to build your own Lido and find a suitable site. I said at the beginning that this indeed would be an exciting, um, an exciting and inspiring project. Um, and of course, the council is willing to engage with you to explore options for more open water swimming in the future. But I'm really sorry, we just can't fund it.
Thank you, leader. Members, we now have the opportunity to have a general debate. Before I turn to the cabinet member to sum up, so members, do we have anyone who'd like to, could you just raise your hand if you'd like to debate? Just give me two minutes, please. Councillor Becker.
Sorry, this is such an awkward spot to be in. Thank you so much for coming. Well, Lucy, there you are. Hello. Thank you to the petitioners for coming along tonight and giving such a passionate presentation. The number of signatures you've been able to capture demonstrates the need for different types of swimming to be available to residents. It's obvious that indoor swimming does not meet all of those needs and we need to consider how we address this. The idea also captures a sense of fun, which I think we we really do need to capture in the city. In that vein, and in response to the petition and the clear desire for outdoor swimming, as councillor Thompson's already noted, the town forum has established an outdoor swimming group formed of myself, councillor Todd and councillor Tippett Cooper. We're looking at opportunities for outdoor swimming in Winchester, in the river, the navigation and other former swimming sites that may have the potential for renovation, such as Bulldrove and the Winchester College outdoor pool known as Gunner's Hole, and starting conversations about what can be done in those sites, although not necessarily by the council itself. We've also, through the new park plan, committed to providing water play, which is so important for children. Although I have to note, I'm also looking forward to to using them with my children with a splash area, with water jets, paddling in the river and dipping areas. The conversation you've started is so important that has highlighted a need. And we are really happy and willing to work with you to find ways to fulfil that need. Thanks. There you are.
Thank you, councillor Becker. Councillor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we as a city um, have had a good history of enjoying fantastic times i- in our rivers. Tunbridge was a fascinating place to jump off of the bridge there into the river there. Uh, my grandad uh, told me loads of stories about him swimming as a young child in Bulldrove, which is owned by obviously Winston College. Uh, we did at Winchester Town Forum have a really good conversation when the plans came forward about uh, upgrading and adding to the North Walls. Um, and and I think the concept and rightly said, we had the Hampshire Wildlife Representation there, who's obviously concerned about, you know, the wildlife being disturbed and that needs to be taken into consideration. But she was already aware that children, teenagers do go into the the rivers anyway, whether it's down in the meadows or when North Walls. And and she obviously wanted to actually make sure that there is a a project moving forward, which members from the forum have have come up together to discuss further, where there will be appropriate areas to say, swim here, enjoy the leisure and at the same time we can protect the wildlife. The concept of the Lido is is the matter as the leaders raises an expense. If I remember being the council rep for the Lido uh, a number of years ago uh, for a couple of years and going into the Lido building, which is a fascinating building, which is still playing Bammerton or whatever. And you 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 park outside the White Lido Building. And I fondly remember swimming there many times, very cold in the summer months, uh, but really enjoying enjoying my time in the Lido. Uh, and it's fascinating, we've still got the Lido building there and and the history there. And even the Rolling Stones have played and performed in the Lido in Winchester. Um, but the matter, if we go down the road of of the Lido per se, is the expense, what do we do? And we're knowing that we've got a fifty-metre pool um, at at Bar End now, which is absolutely a fantastic facility for residents. Um, but the concept is good, we shouldn't poo poo it. I'm, I don't think the town forum um, uh, was engaging of the matter of uh, dismissing it. I think we were very receptive as councillors in the town forum. And I look forward to those three members coming back to the town forum with some absolutely great suggestions for where um, children, young families and teenagers can actually uh, enjoy river swimming and and adults and so forth like that. I do see sometimes pictures on Facebook about uh, 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 ladies swimming in rivers with their dogs beside them and so forth like that. So it it's obviously happening in our rivers and all that sort of stuff of all ages, really, to be honest. But I think the concept is good and I think as councillors, I think we'll look forward to what the town forum comes forward with and then we can then present it to the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Could we now have councillor Gordon Smith, please?
Thank you. We hear quite a lot in this country about world beating this, world beating that. And the reality is, uh, we have actually two very good uh, world beating institutions. One is the universities in this country. Um, Southampton University is ranked something like seventy-seventh on various scales out of something like fifteen hundred in the world. The other thing that we're world beating in this country is uh, um, the creative arts. And Southampton University has, or less dropped into our laps, this great opportunity. And I feel that uh, on no possible way can that be sacrificed. The the out, you know, the balance in favour of it as opposed to using the site for the Lido is, it's a, it's a very unbalanced equation, shall we say. However, uh, we can see there is enthusiasm for the Lido in some location and outdoor swimming. And I think those, that should be pursued as far as we can.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brook, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank Lucy firstly for coming along and presenting so excitedly and almost igniting my childhood excitement of going for the Lido at Hillsie in Portsmouth where, just to trump the the Rolling Stones, Jean Connery used to swim. Um, um, but I just, and and I'm suggesting this, he did, I can show you the picture. Um, the suggestion of this and looking at it across the district is a fantastic idea. I mean, we're looking at the local plan, outdoor swimming facilities would be fabulous. I'm sure that there are areas across the district that will welcome this to um, their communities. So I'd just like to thank Lucy for bringing this forward to us. And actually, I think it's a brilliant thing for us to consider throughout the district.
Thank you, councillor Brook. Councillor Weir, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and um, uh, thank you to Lucy and the team for bringing the petition. It is a, an impressive response uh, to to your challenge. Um, and I've been following the campaign and have spoken to a number of people who've signed the petition. Um, the reasons they give for doing so are varied and some of- The reasons they give for doing so are varied, and some of them, their position has changed since the council and Southampton University unveiled their proposals for a river park. As someone who grew up by a chalk stream, I absolutely understand the joy of paddling, fishing, and swimming in open freshwater. And I'm upset that our rivers and local seas are being so poorly protected in the 21st century. And despite the real pressure that many of us would get from access to a local outside pool or Lido, Winchester does have, in the town area, a very high level of water capacity ahead for swimming, due in large measure to the effective campaigning of other local groups such as the Penguins. But we also, as many have said, have other sports, arts, and leisure interests that need space and facilities supported by the council, and it's now their turn to get our attention. There's been almost continuous consultation with residents on these matters over the last five years, through the town forum and the city council. I believe the proposal with Southampton University could go a long way to filling these unmet needs. And it's an opportunity the city council has a duty to explore on behalf of all interests across our diverse community. But I also support the town forum proposal for a working group on outdoor swimming, to explore with residents the potential for our communities to find ways to meet the desire for more outdoor water-based activities, and to bring together the resources that would be needed to make such an amenity a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Weir. Councillor Weston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you very much, Lucy, for a really enthusiastic presentation about using our waterways. But can I take this opportunity to actually point out to everybody that actually 0% of all our rivers in England and Wales are in good overall health? So actually, you should be promoting, actually trying to improve our water quality if you're going to swim in it. So please, think about that and get involved in trying to keep our water quality top-notch, so that you can enjoy it and you can swim in it. But at the moment, it's not. And if you read the reports about the defuse pollution and all the sewage that goes into the rivers, you wouldn't want to go swimming in them, and that's really disappointing. So please, can I get you behind the environmental agency and everybody else, understanding where all this sewage comes, where all the pollution comes into our rivers, and make them absolutely pristine for us all to enjoy? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Weston. Can we now have councillor Learning? Thank you.
As another regular swimmer myself, indeed, I definitely missed my swim this morning due to preparing for this meeting. I certainly appreciate the desire for a Lido, and I'm keen to facilitate access to outdoor swimming. This isn't a new desire from local residents. I've actually been looking at researching, investigating the operation and finances of Lidos across the country over the past couple of years, and indeed, visited several, because I too am enthusiastic about the idea of having a Lido in the Winchester district. But it would be financially very challenging. Basic research indicates the cost to build a Lido in an area with suitable ground conditions of £8 to £10 million. Most Lidos require extra sources of income or subsidy to cover their running costs. Hillsie Lido, for example, recently had to close due to a lack of funds to replace essential equipment. We also need to think about what kind of Lido we want. Lucy's put forward a really exciting vision of a community Lido where everybody goes. That's not necessarily the case with all Lidos. The Bristol Lido, which is actually mentioned in the group's Facebook page, is in common with many others, run as a high-end health club. The cost to be a member is £64 per month. That compares to £25 per month to be a swim member at our own sport and leisure park. A non-member swim in Bristol costs £20 for a two-hour swim. That's not a place where teenage girls are going to go to hang out for a while, or certainly not the teenage girls that I know. I would love to have a Lido in the district, but it has to be affordable, and we have to be looking at opportunities which everybody can enjoy, particularly those free opportunities. We've mentioned the Splash Park that the town forum's looking to, at North Walls Park. And we've also mentioned making access to the river easier. And that's something that we can do across the district, it's not just a Winchester thing. Clearly, we do need to take councillor Weston's challenge very seriously. And I agree, we should all be campaigning for improvements to the water quality in our rivers. So I would love to see this happen, but it has to happen in the right way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor. Just a reminder, we have three more members to speak, and we've got less than, we've got six and a half minutes. So councillor Reed is next, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's interesting. Close to 100 years ago, open water swimming, cold water swimming was exceedingly popular. And this was the time when a lot of Lidos were constructed. Councillor Learning's already mentioned the Hillsie Lido, as has councillor Brooke. Unfortunately, over the last 20 years, the Portsmouth Lido has been closed longer than it's ever been open. Sadly, because of cost. Cost is enormous. And I did notice when I read this that that was one that was not mentioned. The two mentioned here are Abbey Meadows at Abingdon, on Thames now, by the way, and Petersville, both of which I have actually swum in over some number of years. I like the idea of cold water swimming. It's really interesting. I used to swim in the open sea up until December. Some time ago now, I will say. But I like the idea, but I think, as the leader has already pointed out, it is a terrific amount of responsibility and additional costs that I don't think the city council, as such, can afford. Maybe the town forum might be able to do it as a parish council slash town council element, but definitely the city council have got other major developments which it will be eager to get on with over the next three or four years. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Reed. Councillor Todd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, building on a point that councillor Learning made, I think we've had two very enthusiastic speeches this evening from Lucy and also from councillor Weston. So the combination of enthusiasm for cleaning up our rivers and enabling people to access them is a very important one. And there clearly is a lot of energy for open-air swimming. And when you talk to people in Winchester, there's a lot of happy memories of open-air swimming. There's also some happy memories of gravel and and dirt in the water as well. But generally, what we're also seeing is that people are accessing the river, and it's happening in a way that's fairly uncontrolled, and sometimes causing problems with wildlife and biodiversity. Alsford is an interesting model here, because they've done some very interesting work where they've improved access to the River Arles, so that you can access the water without damage. It's notionally, I think, a pet access point, a dog access point, but human beings can use it as well. The other thing that's interesting about Alsford is that the last, I think the last Lido opened in the district was the Alsford Lido, which hasn't really had enough attention. I was surprised that councillor Gordon Smith missed the opportunity to praise it. But between, I think, 1952 and 1972, 1950 or thereabouts, there was a Lido at the back of, in what is now the War Memorial Garden. And you can actually see the shape of it there in the ground. And that highlights the point that we do need to be mindful of the district interest in this and the district opportunities for open water swimming. That said, I absolutely share the objective of sorting out the question of open-air swimming in Winchester, and doing a proper job of understanding what the opportunities are. It's something we need to do anyway. You know, historically, people in Winchester had access to the river, had the ability to swim in the river. And that has gradually been withdrawn over time, for good reasons at the time. But the net effect has been that the way that people interacted with the river has been restricted and controlled. And they're missing ways of accessing water and open air that they're used to. So I have a lot of interest in finding what a modern and appropriate solution to that is, that reflects biodiversity, that reflects the other uses of the river. I'm also the Cabinet member for the Lido car park, amongst other things. And whereas I think redigging that out is probably quite impractical, again, while I think we need to sort out the river question anyway, I mean, happy to have conversations if there are plans to be looked at. I'm sure the group that I'm on with councillor Becker and councillor Tippett Cooper will be happy to hear any and all ideas that might come forward. There's such a hunger within the city to sort out this question of open-air swimming. And I think if we do find a good solution, possibly building on the knowledge and experience of Alsford, working with partners, like the college as a very important landowner, and river access owner, and other necessary partners like the Hampshire and Wildlife Trust, then we should be able to make real progress. And certainly, when we've done that, I'd hope that we would have a model that we could use, possibly in combination with an Alsford model, to carry on those conversations around the rest of the district, to ensure that everyone, everywhere across the district, who wants to access open-air swimming is able to do so within a convenient and enjoyable and environmentally responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Todd. Councillor Clea, we have a minute left.
Oh, gosh, minute. Thank you, Mayor. Lucy, we have met and talked about this once, I recall. I've got to admit, I don't swim, never have. Have a bit of a fear of water, but I do envy all of you that do, especially at the new sports and leisure park now. And I would love to see something, though, in the district. And councillor Reed, I have been to the Portsmouth Lido years ago, and I used to sit there and sunbathe, and it was lovely, but I never ventured in the water. Yes, I'd love to see something in the district, that I would support. But unfortunately, it comes down to money in the long run, and the finance is the problem. It is just not there. But may I say, as councillor Thompson said, we would love to work with you and talk to you. Of course we would, and I personally look forward, like others, to the town forum and their proposals. So, but, and I do actually support your great enthusiasm, it should be applauded, thank you. And I also, bravo to councillor Weston, I fully support your comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clea. Councillor Power, would you still like to speak?
Very briefly, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of doing my O-level revision at the Pearlywell Lido, which may explain the results. We looked at a Lido in Alsford about 15 years ago, when there was funding sloshing about. And even with a gift of the land, the running costs came, and very limited opening hours, the running costs came out at about £1,000 per year per voting adult in the catchment, and we regrettably abandoned that. Running costs are the barrier. But you're all very welcome to come and see the dog dip or people dip at Alsford, I'm happy to take you down there, so you can see how you can manage access and protect wildlife. Don't bring too many dogs. I love open water swimming, it's an enormous pleasure, I wish we could take this further. And I'm very happy to hear the response of portfolio holders about continuing discussions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Just like to now close the debates. Could councillor Thompson, do you wish to sum up, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And again, thank you to Lucy for bringing such an exciting idea to the table for us to debate tonight. That's been great. Well, I think we are all in agreement that open water swimming is a wonderful thing, and we would all really like to have a further conversation with the petitioners about how we might progress this. I think, credit to councillor Weston for bringing up the state of our rivers and the fact that we all really need to campaign to stop the sewage that seems to be regularly dispersed into our rivers. That truly is, it has been horrifying actually to see that and to hear about it. So I think we are basically all in agreement that we would like to see facilities for open water swimming progressed throughout the district, not just in Winchester. But at the moment, the proposal is that this petition is forwarded to the Working Party on Open Water Swimming at the town forum, for them to have further thoughts about this, and also possibly talk to Alsford about their plans that they had to take this further. And that is what I propose that we do with this petition at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leland. Thank you, Miss Taylor, for bringing the petition. So the matters raised in the petition are being referred on to, as you heard, the Winchester Town Forum. And I thank Miss Taylor again for bringing the issue, and of course, you're welcome to stay until the next item. So the second petition this evening is being presented by Miss Janet Berry on behalf of the Highcliff Forum. Miss Berry, would you like to come to the mic, please? Just a reminder that you have three minutes to introduce your petition. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Bar End Depot site petition, which has 350 signatures from the communities in Highcliff, Bar End, and St Giles Hill. As you know, the council-owned depot site has been deemed surplus to requirements, and Cabinet has agreed to dispose of it. It is essential, from the local community's perspective, that before anything else happens, there is a properly funded and fully inclusive community engagement exercise. This would allow exploration of the site's potential to meet local needs and aspirations. Local people are acutely aware that this is the only major piece of land remaining undeveloped in a neighbourhood with limited public transport that lacks essential services and amenities. This is possibly the final chance to enable everyday needs to be met and improve the quality of life and wellbeing of residents. Whilst the council's carbon neutrality action plan and biodiversity action plan rightly focus on environmental sustainability, it is also vital to recognise the importance of social sustainability. These goals are not incompatible. The last consultation with local residents about potential uses for this site took place 20 years ago, in 2002, with the John Thompson Community Engagement Exercise, investigating providing new affordable homes and community benefits, but never implemented. More recent consultations over the new leisure centre culminated in the 2018 Bar End Design Framework, which only addressed fundamental design features, such as height of buildings, not specific uses of the depot site. A meaningful neighbourhood engagement exercise could enable local people to take part in a collaborative decision-making process from start to finish. Real engagement through ongoing participation and a commitment to honour the results, not just being asked to comment on an already developed scheme. It would take advantage of local knowledge and enthusiasm to help shape the community's future. Local people are keen to get involved, but also realise that this is a two-way process, a discussion to work out what is possible. It would enable new ideas to come forward, taking account of the impact of COVID-19, helping the community to adapt to changing circumstances. It would empower the local community and build its resilience, embracing approaches identified in the town forum's New Winchester Vision 2020 to 30 for the town area, such as encouraging access to essential goods and services within a 15-minute walk or cycle, the co-created city, and the auditing of resources to address imbalances. I really hope that this can be considered to ensure that viable options for this site are explored, to deliver the best scheme to serve this local community and allow it to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you just like to return to your seat, please? Could I have the deputy leader to respond, please? Could I have the deputy leader to respond please?
Well, thank you, madam mayor. Um, and thank you Janet for your presentation on on behalf of the uh Highcliff Residents Forum. It it is indeed timely. Uh, officers informed me that they they planned to discuss engagement on the Bar End Depot site next week. So I think it's important that this um discussion, this petition and the uh subsequent debate that we'll have will inform that this discussion about how we engage in the future. But I must caution around the fact that the Bar End Depot site is not a very big site. Um, and we have had quite a few discussions about finances within the council, uh, having gone through quite a difficult, difficult time, that a capital receipt on that site was quite, is quite important to the council. So I'm not convinced that all aspirations for the site can be, by local residents, could could possibly be um um achieved, but but it is important that we go ahead with with um with more engagement with with local residents.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Members, we now have an opportunity for a general debate before turning back to the deputy leader to sum up. Can I have indication for anyone who'd like to speak please? Councillor Radcliffe, would you like to start please?
Thank you very much, madam mayor. Um, as one of the ward councillors for St Michael, I'd just like to echo uh demands for the council to use the opportunity presented uh by the redevelopment of the Bar End Depot site to engage with local residents and to take into account uh the aspirations of the local community there. In late 2020, together with our much missed colleague councillor Murphy, councillor Edwards and I carried out a survey of residents in Highcliff and Bar End to get a sense of what local people would like to see on the depot site. That wasn't scientific and it wasn't a substitute for an official consultation, but we did distribute surveys to all households and received back 52 completed surveys. And I just wanted to just give you the headline results of that because they're quite interesting. Um, the results suggested the thing that most people most wanted to see on the site is it was a food shop, a mini supermarket. Uh, the second and third most popular ideas were green space and a footpath connecting Highcliff with the new sports and leisure centre, which would give local residents a way to get to the new leisure centre without having to go back out onto the busy Bar End Road. And a community hall or community rooms was also mentioned by some. Now, these survey findings confirm what councillor Edwards and I often heard on the doorstep as well, where the lack of a local food shop often comes up. Whatever the decisions it takes on the depot, I understand that cabinet needs to be able to show that it's delivering value for taxpayers right across the district. But it's also right that we're now looking to deliver benefits for the local community in Highcliff and Bar End, whose residents will be most directly affected by the redevelopment of the site. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, as a member of the former depot insight group that sat back in 2020, um, we did look back at things that had occurred in the past and what, you know, we would hope to push forward on the site. And one of the things that we as the group acknowledged was that consultation was something that should take place and that this should be involving local residents. Um, and I think Ms Berry referred back to, or might have actually been councillor Lerni, to the 2018, which was involving with the new sports and leisure centre and the consultation that had come from that. And of course, there has always been this talk about with this development, we need to make sure that the local community are a key aspect of what is going on and what they want needs to be, you know, a focal point. We know the site has certain resources that can be used by residents. Highcliff, which actually my family are originally from, my mother was born in Highcliff, um, is a, an area that now does not have a local shop. And actually, for a lot of people, that food shop, that local connection is something that is very useful and very needed. And those access to the leisure centre, which allows them to have a safe route for, you know, particularly with young children, you know, families wanting to use that resource. I think that we really do need to work with residents, talk with them. We need to make this site work. It is a very small site. Um, I think one of the few um sort of visits I had during 2020 was actually to the depot site with the members of um the sort of depot insight group. It's not a big piece of land, but it's a focal and important piece of land. And I think that we as the council need to make sure that we do work with residents, work with ward councillors to ensure that we actually provide the best, you know, resource for them, but also for the community and the district at large. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams. Uh councillor Lammy?
Thank you, madam mayor. Having been associated with the uh new leisure centre from its inception, the local residents have worked very hard with the council to get the right uh possession for the leisure centre and everything else. The old depot site was always part of that idea that it could help to regenerate that part of the city. We could produce some uh things for the local residents, like a local shop. Uh, but also the rest of the site would work with the leisure centre to so that the business plan would work in conjunction with each other and promote each other. And that's something that's important and we've been pushing for that for many years. So I think we need to push on with it now rather than just keep sitting down and doing nothing.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Lerni?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, Miss, Miss Berry mentioned the Bar End Design Framework and I think it's important that we do recognise that that does still have merit, even though I fully accept what she says about um it only dealing with design issues, not local needs. Um, those landscape buffers and reference to building heights are important when we consider uh what might happen to the site. Um, the indication that the site um was going to be available has led to a number of potential users and development proposals coming forward, uh, many of which fit well with community aspirations, um, others not. Um, some of which were commercially viable and others not. Um, but it's important to recognise that no one site can deliver all the aspirations of the local community and the ongoing costs of any facilities have to be considered. But um from what we've seen so far, a food stall is eminently achievable as is um a route through to the leisure centre. Um, and potentially it may be possible to achieve um other resident goals as well. Um, I am very happy to commit to consulting and engaging with the local community um before any disposal as portfolio holder. Um, and I think the council is happy to to move ahead on that basis.
Thank you councillor Lerni. As the debate looks like it's now closed, can't see any other members who wish to speak? Uh councillor Cutler, do you wish to sum up please?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. I I I think actually councillor, councillor Lerni has um summed up quite admirably there uh in 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 making the commitment to um develop an engagement process with with um the Highcliff residents and and the other residents in in the area um before we move on to disposal. I think it's fairly clear uh in in discussions that that have come up that that two of the key things are the permeability of the site and uh and the food shop. And I think that's already been in all the considerations of discussions. But clearly there is a need for further engagement and and we commit to doing that.
Thank you councillor Cutler. And thank you for outlining how the petition will be responded to in due course. Just like to also thank uh Miss Berry again for raising the issue with the council. And you're very welcome to stay, but um all my, all public are welcome to stay, but I'm actually going to have a 10-minute comfort break until we go on to the next gender item. So 10-minute break now. Thank you. until we go on to the next agenda item. So a 10-minute break now. Thank you. Members, if you can take your seats, please. I'd like to get home today if possible, but I've got a feeling it's going to be tomorrow. Thank you, members. So the next item of business this evening is agenda item number seven. Consideration and determination of recommended minutes. Ms Kirkman, could you please introduce? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members. Agenda item 7A is the recommended minute of cabinet of the 15th of December 2021. And this is set out on your agenda and also on page 17 of your agenda pack, together with the draft minute of the cabinet meeting. Report cab 3322 refers, and this is included in your agenda pack on pages 19 to 298. The report's recommendation is for council to authorise the strategic director with responsibility for the Central Winchester Regeneration Project to initiate and conduct the procurement process for the selection of a development partner for the Central Winchester project. Madam Mayor, please can I remind the meeting that appendix E to the report is exempt and should the meeting wish to consider these in detail, the meeting must firstly move into exempt session. That agenda is set out on page 419 of your agenda pack. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. councillor Lerni, would you move the recommendation in report cab 3322 and the recommended minute of cabinet, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to move this recommendation today to move ahead and select a development partner for the Central Winchester Regeneration Project. While this has been brought to council as a simple recommendation to start the process of selecting a development partner, it is backed up by years of consultation and engagement with the public. Over two years' work was involved in creating the Central Winchester SPD, which was adopted in June 2018. Development options designed to generate debate were presented in February 2020, followed by six months of stakeholder engagement events, looking at aspects of the development such as the public realm. Consultation on draft development proposals was started in November 2020 and was one of the most successful and well-advertised consultations the council has ever held, with social media posts reaching over 480,000 people, 2,329 unique engagements on Facebook and Instagram, 1,000 visits to our virtual exhibition and 336 responses to the citizens' space questionnaire. In July last year, we engaged with the public on the strategic outline case, which presented the options as to how we should develop the site. And considering the highest scoring options, we concluded at that time that although we could sell the site to the highest bidder and rely on planning to control development, procuring a single developer was the better approach to achieve the broader outcomes and the vision of the SPD to deliver a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly quarter that is distinctly Winchester and supports a vibrant retail and cultural heritage offer set within an exceptional public realm and incorporating the imaginative reuse of existing buildings. The development proposals on which the brief and business case are based are firmly rooted in the SPD but have been refined and further developed following that engagement and consultation, as well as the Agreement to the Movement Strategy, the Declaration of the Climate Emergency, the adoption of a new city council strategy and the vision for Winchester, as well as the changes which have occurred in demand for homes and workspace since the SPD was agreed. We have engaged with the public and stakeholders such as the bid, Hampshire Chamber of Commerce and the universities on not only what, but how, and received widespread endorsement. We are now at the point where we need to stop talking about it and take that big step forward. It is inevitable that some members have reservations. This is a complex matter. It's already had several false starts and vocal naysayers, although many fewer now than there have been in the past. There will be doubts, but extensive work has been done to mitigate the risks and deal with concerns. Now is the time for councillors to get behind the public desire to see us move forward on this rather than committing us to further years of delay. In 2019, the Liberal Democrats took control of this council on the basis of a manifesto which promised to prioritise the redevelopment of Central